Right call is June 26, 2023, County Council meeting. Ms. Spottet, would you give us the indication?
Lord, please instruct us and teach us in the way that we should conduct this meeting. Please counsel us with your loving eye on us. Let our aims in this meeting be aligned with your direction. Let our plans be orchestrated by you. Father, let your will be done in this meeting so that this can be a meeting that is based upon your desires for us. Whatever it is that you want to result from this meeting, be with us. Amen.
They have a motion for approval of the agenda.
So moved. Second.
Properly moved to second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed is likewise. John, do we have any public comments?
Yes, sir. Ms. Toni Boyd?
Hi, good evening. I'm Toni Boyd. I'm the appraiser for Calhoun County. I'm a certified residential appraiser, appraising since 1998. I've lived in Calhoun County since 2009, and I've been working for the county for over 12 years. I've worked under three different administrators. I just wanted to speak tonight to put some things on record as a county employee and a citizen of the county. I'm aware that my comments as the employee may not be the feelings of all the employees, but I feel we have some, you know, there definitely are some that would agree with me, just like there's things being said in the public that are, that are, you know, those feelings, but they're definitely not the feelings of all of the citizens. As I've stated, I've worked under three administrators. Although I respect all three, I must say I've seen the most improvement for the county and the employees under the current administration. I saw the new administrator come in, make contact with all departments, familiarize themselves with Johnny and Richard as to what each department does on a daily basis, and look for ways to make improvements and raise morale. This is something I think would be beneficial if, when county council members are elected that could give clarification as to what each department does and what people are doing when, you know, how we work. The current administration has trimmed staff with an eye towards keeping capable personnel. In my opinion, that is trimming the fat. As an appraiser with the highest level state certification to appraise residential properties, I was aware that I would be working for a small county and simply would not make what I could either in a larger county or the private sector. Part of my take in the lower salary is that I considered the fact that I would have state insurance, which was a big deal, and my continuing education would be paid for, my licensing fees included, and I would receive a small cellphone allowance since I use my cellphone for work-related things during business hours. Let me make clear that the cellphone allowance does not begin to cover the entire cost of the phone. But I considered all these things when agreeing to work with Calhoun County. I started January 18, 2011. This was during the time that the medical insurance costs were flying through the roof. The following July, after my start date, the county switched to private insurance due to the rising costs. Over and over again through the years to follow, we changed carriers several times. I realize why this was happening, but it didn't negate the fact that I lost something that I considered to be a big part of my salary when taking this job. Most people when working get raises or have performance reviews often or yearly. If they are doing a good job, they get decent raises that amount to dollars per hour, not the small percent or cost of living increases we have seen. I've seen those small 2% cost of living increases be null when taking into consideration the higher insurance rates. Those small raises, if any, often only amounted to as little as $5 a paycheck or $10 a month. These percentage increases do not take into consideration the employees' work ethic as they are blanket throughout the employees. Those who work harder aren't given incentive when everyone is treated the same. That has changed under the current administration and is appreciated by the employees. The recent salary studies done were in effort to get our county salaries closer to the average normal throughout South Carolina. Those efforts are greatly appreciated by me as an employee of Calhoun County who saw little to no raises over the last 12 years when it comes to dollar amount of my paychecks. Any bump in salary is greatly appreciated because we, we are and have been suffering from rising inflation, just like everybody else, with little to no relief. I thank you, administration and council, for your recent efforts in this matter. Unlike larger counties, many of us employees either do multiple jobs or are trained in other positions in effort to cover those positions when employees are out or positions are vacant. This helps to keep the county offices running smoothly or running at all. I often hear how people much prefer to work with Calhoun County than surrounding counties because they're actually able to get business done here. I believe that is in part due to the fact that many employees are knowledgeable in other areas as well as their own. I also believe that it keeps costs down when you can pay one person to do multiple jobs instead of paying multiple salaries. I believe that is a major benefit of our small town and our small government. As a grandmother who will be adopting my five- and 10-year-old granddaughters in the next year or so, I also appreciate the recent and upcoming community development that has been happening. When I moved here over 10 years ago, it was like going back in time at least 20 years. Although in some ways that may be a good thing, in many ways it was also not. I appreciate the recent efforts made to community as maybe our children and grandchildren may stay here to raise their families unlike the past when they moved to larger cities for better jobs, more services, and more readily available activities for their children. Again, I thank you, administration and council, for your recent efforts in this matter. Calhoun County is a wonderful community I am proud to be a part of. I've seen us pulled together many times over the years to be blessings for those in need for many reasons. Unfortunately, change is ultimately always happening and not always well-received. We can't always make everyone happy, but for the most part, Calhoun County citizens are good, God-fearing, Christian people. Let's come together to make the changes and growth as painless as possible. Let's build each other up and support our leaders who are looking towards making Calhoun County a better place for many generations to come. Thank you, John and Richard. You and your efforts are appreciated by many of the employees of Calhoun County. Thank you, council, for your service and your leadership in finally moving our county forward, making this a better place for our children, grandchildren, and for many generations to come. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next, John? Somebody? Do we have?
No, so that's it.
Okay. Okay. We're out of the public comments. We got a lot of public hearings here, so we, now we in public hearing, ordinance 2023-8, third reading.
An ordinance to provide for the appropriation of funds and the levy of taxes for fiscal year 2023 through 24 for the operation debt service building fund, food service of public schools of Calhoun County, the Orangeburg Calhoun Technical College, and the Calhoun County Disabilities and Special Needs Board, including the L. Marion Gressit Center, to provide for deposit and disbursement of funds and to provide otherwise for the affairs of public education in Calhoun County.
Any public comments or questions? Okay. I guess we can take a motion to go ahead and approve that one.
So moved. Second.
Properly moved in second that we approve ordinance 2023-8. All in favor? Aye. Opposed is likewise. The ayes have it.
Ordinance 2023-9, an ordinance to provide for the levy of taxes for capital improvements and debt service for Calhoun County for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023, and for the expenditure thereof and other funds, and to provide otherwise for the affairs of the county.
Again, do we have any public comments or questions? Now your time. Hearing none, ordinance 2023-9 is closed. We have a motion for approval.
So moved. Second.
Properly moved in second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed is likewise. The ayes have it.
Ordinance 2023-10, an ordinance to provide for the fees for county purposes for Calhoun County to operate and maintain water and wastewater for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023, for the expenditures thereof and other funds, and to provide otherwise for the affairs of the county.
Again, any public comments or questions on ordinance 2023-10? Hearing none, ordinance 2023-11 is closed. We have a motion. We have a motion for approval.
So moved.
Properly moved in second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed is likewise. The ayes have it.
Ordinance 2023-11, an ordinance to provide for the fees for county purposes for Calhoun County to operate and maintain Calhoun Hills Golf Complex for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023, for the expenditures thereof and other funds, and to provide otherwise for the affairs of the Calhoun Hills Golf Complex.
Any questions or comments?
I have a question or a comment. The, so does the, what are we doing with the golf course? What is our, our long-term goal, need for the golf course? Are we planning to keep it? Can, can you respond to my questions or am I just up here to make a comment?
You just made the comments, right?
Okay. All right. So I'm not going to give any answers. All right. So we were told a year or so ago that it's going to cost us like $500,000, $700,000 to redo the irrigation system out there, and I don't know, I haven't paid any attention that I got, that that all got done. I assume that we didn't make that improvement. Okay. So the amount of money that's going in and the amount of money that's coming out, we're still losing money in holding that golf course. And I would like to see the council make some effort to remove that loss from the budget of the county and get it either into private hands, because we know that private business can always run a company better than a government can, or to completely sell it to an investor. And there's been a lot of suggestions. If, if we sold it, I don't think we would have to sell it at a loss because we got it at a good price. Prices have gone up. There's a lot of investors that are looking to put houses and recreation facilities in our county. And so I would, if my comments on this ordinance is, I know you're going to pass it, but my comment is for the coming year, before we put it into 2024, 2025, that we really seriously either have a study committee to determine the feasibility of selling it, or making it more profitable, or making it be something for our county. In last month, there were two houses in the golf course area that I saw in the paper that were being foreclosed on, in the golf course area. Two big houses. One of them was beautiful. I don't know what the situation was, but I didn't think that looked very good. I thought that was a bad indication to have two separate houses that went on or that were advertised to go on the public auction block and be sold by the county. Something, something's wrong with that. And so it, it just seems to me that at the very least, I would like us to, I'd like the council to organize a study to see the feasibility of keeping the property. Is it ever going to make any money? What is the deterioration of the infrastructure that we're going to end up putting money into? It, even, even the grass has got to be reseeded, cleaned up, make it look nice. People don't play golf out in cow pasture. So there's just things like that that just go on and on and on. And don't see it making money. It hasn't made money, and I'd like to see it either make money for us or, or just get rid of it.
Thanks, sir. Any other comments or questions?
I have one question.
Come on to the podium.
I just have one very simple question. If someone was willing to write an offer to buy the golf course tomorrow, would we entertain it?
I don't know. I'd have to discuss that with council. I couldn't tell you that, Chris.
I mean, that's my question. If someone was willing to actually write an offer, a real offer tomorrow.
Well, that's a question for council.
Did y'all talk about it and get back to it?
Yeah, we will. We talked about everything here. We talked about it.
That's all. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? They have a motion for approval. Ordinance 2023.
Second.
Properly moved in second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed is likewise?
No.
Have one no?
Ordinance 2023-12, an ordinance to provide for the levy of 4.2 mills, taxes to operate and maintain the senior-run fire district for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023, and to appropriate other funds for the expenditures thereof, and to provide otherwise for the affairs of the senior-run fire district.
Any questions or comments on ordinance 2023-12? Hearing none, the ordinance on 2023-12 is closed. We entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Properly moved in second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed is likewise. The ayes have it.
Ordinance 2023-13, an ordinance to appropriate the authorization, authorized funds to operate and maintain the Calhoun Hills Rural, Calhoun County Rural Fire District for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023, for the expenditures thereof, to provide two mills for debt service and to provide otherwise for the affairs of Calhoun County Rural Fire District.
Any comments or questions? Hearing now closed on ordinance 23-13. I'll accept a motion for approval.
So moved. Second.
Properly moved in second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed is likewise. The ayes have it.
Ordinance 2023-14, an ordinance to provide for the levy of taxes for Calhoun, for county purposes for Calhoun County for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023, and for the expenditures thereof and other funds, and to provide otherwise for the affairs of the county.
Any questions or comments? Come on to the podium.
Council members, I sat down, I had a very long speech to read you. I'm not going to read the speech. As opposed, I'm challenging, I'm going to challenge you five. Put a committee together. Put a committee together of business-minded men and women from across Calhoun County. Pick one person from each of your areas. Won't cost the county a nickel. Don't give them the power to change anything. Give them the simple power to review our budget on a quarterly basis and look at our as-spent, as compared, our budgeted items, and allow them, the businessmen, business-minded men and women in Calhoun County, to help you do your job. You're elected by the people to represent the people. Let the people that manages private businesses every day help you. There may be things that they look at the budget and say, you know what, we're doing the absolute best job we can do in Calhoun County. There is absolutely nothing in here that needs to change. They may look at it, and they may have some suggestions that nobody's thought of. Suggestions don't cost anybody a nickel. Why can't we consider, I would encourage you, I would challenge you to put together a committee, five people, and allow them to help you with that. The other thing I would challenge you on, and I'm not going to get into this too deep, but these take-home vehicles. Take-home vehicles, the IRS rules changed. Section 4, IRS Code 15-B, in their publication.
Chris, I'm going to stop you. I'm going to allow you to make a short statement on that, but we're right now talking about the budget.
This is about budget.
This is not about the budget to me. I'm talking about the overall budget we're talking about, not, not on vehicles and that like that, not separately. But I'll go, I'll go ahead and hear you. Okay?
If we eliminate some of these take-home vehicles that are not necessities, we would cut things out of the budget that aren't necessary to be spent. IRS has very clear rules on how we have to show this on the employee's W-2, and I don't believe that we're doing that correctly. If we're not, we're opening our employees in the county up to IRS problems with their taxes.
Like I said, Chris, I would hear you on some. I think you're going out of line. Any other comments or questions? I'll accept a motion for approval of the ordinance 2023-14.
So moved. Second.
Properly moved in second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed is likewise?
No.
You got one no?
Ordinance 2023.
Wait, can I?
Look, I asked, I asked, did you have any statements earlier? Nobody, you didn't say anything to me, but I'll allow it.
Okay. I just, I want to say this to the public for the reason I voted the way I did. I prepared a statement. I would like to thank all of the taxpayers that have reached out to me over the past few weeks with your concerns regarding this issue. Your feedback has provided me with tremendous insight. I ran on keeping taxes lower, but I've quickly learned that there is to be a unified body and agreeance. It doesn't seem that we have here on this council a unified body and agreements, agreeance with keeping taxes low. We cannot justify raising taxes during a time of economic instability. There is no excuse. Administration should have instructed all department heads to start with previous year's budget and find ways to cut expenditures. In reality, they were allowed to request more. Administrations have claimed that they cut the request 1.4 million before preliminary figures were presented to council, but had department heads received proper guidance to cut expenses from previous year's budget, we would not be faced with an increase in the budget. I requested that the county discontinue the allowance of take-home vehicles, which seemed to fall on deaf ears. Now we are asking folks to sacrifice more from their budget. Also, administration can have more money this fiscal year. We should have cut administrative departments and sufficiently funded the sheriff's office without further burdening taxpayers.
Ms. Spottet, I'm going to yell at you, because we've been over the stuff you're talking about. Now, actually, what I want the county administrator to do is get everybody one of these, a handbook. This is from '99 when I had, and instruct you in there that we don't even supposed to be discussing what you're saying now. You're not supposed to be giving your opinion, I mean, when we.
I'm giving the reason I voted the way I voted.
She could have done that earlier. I mean, but I'm saying you can't just do that. Okay. All right. We down to third reading on ordinance.
Ordinance 2023-15, fire district cost recovery ordinance.
Now, I mean, now in the public hearing on ordinance 2023-15. Any comments or questions?
Was, was there a change in that?
Between second, third reading.
Yeah. Can you tell the public what the change was exactly?
So the, two of the fire departments had requested that electric vehicles be added to the list as some clarification on how the money gets allocated back to the fire departments. And so that was the update.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? From the public? Any further discussion? Hearing none, the ordinance 2023-15 is closed. We have a motion for approval.
So moved. Second.
Properly moved in second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed is likewise? Any reality ordinances? We down to approval of the minutes, June 12, 2023, regular meeting. May I have a motion for approval of the June 12, 2023 minutes?
So moved. Second.
Properly moved in second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed is likewise. The ayes have it. No appointments?
Mr. Chairman, we do have a committee report that has resources and development of animal services.
I'm sorry. Ms. Spottet, go ahead.
So last Thursday, Mr. Carson and I met with Animal Control, and we discussed some things that they need over there at Animal Control. They discussed that they are very busy. The kennels are full. We have some money that county council gives to help them out, to help whatever in your community, and I gave some money to Animal Control because they needed crates. We discussed adoptions versus rescues. We were supposed to have a few volunteers that do rescue join us, but we had some technical difficulties, so those volunteers are going to meet with me and the deputy administrator later on. But we're going to allow some volunteers help us with rescues, pretty much is how we summed up the meeting, to get more dogs out of the kennel so they're not sitting in there for months. Some dogs sit in there for six, seven, eight months. So we pretty much summed up our meeting with getting our volunteers to help us get rescues out. Is there anything I missed?
No.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate that report. No appointments? No, no proclamations under parents, Derrigan, Etheridge. They come forward to the man.
Thank y'all for hearing me. Got a problem. I need help from you guys. The problem is noise, guns, from the event place that is next door to our property owned by the Melinda family. I'm not sure who's the owner exactly. I would take you out, just to look at this. Our home we built after Hugo. We have neighbors, including me, that are complaining. I've sent a, actually, a complaint. And I'm just going, I thank y'all for hearing me out on this. We moved to this property in 1987. Moved in our home in 1980, 1995, which I own 15 years from there. It's not every, every day that Hurricane Hugo provided anything. It did provide us timber for a home. What do I do about the evaluation of my home that falls with a venue that has noise almost every weekend? I was going to invite everyone to a meal up there, but we couldn't do it because you couldn't hear me. If I said anything to you, you would have to hear the news screaming next door, shooting next door. They denied the shooting. Probably sent us out to 100 rounds from here about two weeks ago from an AR. Luke Chapel is my neighbor. He heard it, and we're worried about stray bullets, drinking and driving coming from the venue. They don't serve it there, but they serve it there. They bring it there. And I understand, and I've had the sheriff several times. He has 911. Call, I've called him several times, and each time they've come, they have tried to shut them or get them to tone it down, and it doesn't work. They drive off, and they go right back to where they were. And I don't look for anything but teeth. And the pictures of my home there, you see where we have outside venues where we go outside. So they have stolen my teeth. So there's got to be some way to handle this. The county doesn't have a noise nuisance regulation that has teeth in it. I have a suggestion. And let me back up a little bit. We have two small grandchildren. We can't allow them the yard when they're having a venue, so-called venue, to scream, to shout, and to shooting. They say they don't allow fireworks. I have a copy of what they require, and they don't, live up to what they require. Nobody to maintain what's there at all. Nobody can maintain what's there at all. The sheriff, Summers, he called Mr. Melinda and talked to him about this. This had been last year, and it's, it's gotten worse and better. My older brother, Maurice Effer, he lives about a mile from the venue, and he told me before I came here, he would be in here tonight, but he's got eye surgery tomorrow. He heard it over the weekend. And he's a mile away. I'm about a half mile from him. And, uh, I left to decide, the council kept deciding what's the difference between a resident and commercial violations. I do construction every day. I do heavy construction, anywhere from a faucet number to a heavy, heavy construction. The only way people listen is when you take their money from them. A violation, first offense, five hundred bucks. Second offense, a thousand dollars. Third offense, twenty-five hundred dollars. Fourth offense, you start for the, uh, truck, you tell me to shut down. You complete that, and if it was up to my, not my feelings about it, the only thing I got in my life good. Children can't be, um, endangered like that. I can't let my own grandchildren go in the yard.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Take a doggy, you want me to pack?
Go, y'all.
Okay, uh, we'll take a look at that, Mr. Dar, Mr. Etheridge. Not going on deaf ears. We'll, uh, we'll get with the sheriff and see what we can come up, and the magistrate and see what we can come up with.
Well, there's, there's got to be some type of ordinance to make it work.
Okay, we'll see what we can come up with to help you out, okay? Uh, no resolutions, uh, no old business, no new business, no new ordinances. John, do you have anything?
Uh, just one thing. I just wanna remind everybody about, uh, this Saturday, July first, the, uh, annual Fourth of July fireworks, uh, for the county as well as a number of, uh, citizens from out of county. Uh, hopefully they're big, good weather and a good show.
Okay. Anybody else have anything? Yeah, I'll accept a motion for adjournment.
So move. Second.
Properly move in second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Poses likewise, the ayes have it. Thank you all.
I didn't even...
Thank you all for coming.